We're gonna work on some bills. That was put together by the ad hoc committee. And I guess we'll get started with the first bill. Forty-five sixty-one. Basically forty-five sixty-one has the changes setbacks required for new buildings and areas planted. Prior to county zoning regulations and areas where lots planted prior to the inception of the county zoning regulations by order of Saint Charles County Courts in November 2nd, 1959. That a new building shall be subject to the minimum of setback requirements to the setback distance of the closest legal pre-existing building. And primarily, this would allow defiance where you have buildings that are sitting closer to the right-of-way than our current zoning regulations. So it would allow additional buildings in between, on vacant lots in between those existing buildings to be, their setback to be adjusted to what the current buildings along the street escape. Anybody have any questions about that or any concerns?
All these changes we've made, we feel are pretty basic and up oriented.
Mr. Chairman, are we discussing the bill that's still filed? Pardon me? It's the point of discussion, the bill that's before you now.
We're discussing the proposed substitute bill, Arvo.
Forty-five sixty-one.
Yeah, I'm looking at the substitute bill.
Okay, because my comments here that you've already seen are based upon the original bill and I'm not sure if any of that's been changed or not. This one's easy. I think everybody knows what we're trying to do. We're just trying to make sure we got the right language because I think the original historic district wasn't really defined anywhere.
Well, it was defined, but it had such a narrow number of structures that would meet that.
But has that been fixed?
Yes.
I don't think everybody's good to go on this.
Took out historic structures and it now deals with those buildings that existed before the imposition of zoning.
Move beyond to forty-five sixty-two. This would deal with zoning. Get to the guts of it here.
This is the ones that's like the like, industrial, the industrial, commercial, and commercials, zero setbacks. The community development can make a decision rather than having a setback. They can decide, right? Right, Mike? You can decide that this is a zero setback.
It's starting, it's kind of, it's actually what it is. It's zero setback is allowed on the side or rear when it joins a similar building. So eye to eye, see to see. So they, they should know that it's a zero setback. We're already dictated by the building owners who support the separation.
And this doesn't require variance or, this is what you guys suggested, that it's a right. It's not a.
Yeah, I mean, the big thing on this one and the next one, I think, is that the fact that the bill originally was creating another whole route here that somebody could take instead of going to the P and Z. If you win there, you're fine. If you lose, you can go to us. This route allows you to go to planning and zoning and they could give you what you wanted and they wouldn't have to come to us, but you couldn't go any further. So I guess the philosophical question here is, do you want to have two parallel routes that people can choose which one they want to go to, P and Z and then to U, or do you want to make them just go to P and Z and that's as far as they can go? Mike's point, I think I put in here is, people are gonna ask the staff, well, which do you suggest? And they're gonna, they're gonna just say, hey, here's the two paths. We can't tell you, we can't tell you which one you'll have a better chance of winning or less of a chance of losing. But I guess the question is, do you really want to create a parallel path to accomplish what you can do?
So with the substitute bill, that wouldn't, it wouldn't, wouldn't make a difference.
Okay, so that's taken care of too.
Yeah, that's taken care of. Now, it's a right they have.
We're good?
Like so.
I'm good. Doesn't go nobody else, but I.
I thought that the substitute bills are always, everything we agreed with, we had a, isn't that right? Isn't that what, we addressed the concerns, right? Right, Keith, the staff, and saw the substitute bills are everything that.
As the county exec is saying, it took care of their concern about process matters. Certainly takes care of the ad hoc concern about imposing these unnecessary setbacks in commercial and industrial.
Okay, so that's forty-five.
My understanding is that there's really not a whole lot to talk about here, but just make sure everybody understands what's in the bill. I don't think there's much disagreement anymore, is there?
What's that, forty-five sixty-three?
The same way with forty-five sixty-three, Keith?
This, actually. Forty-five, forty-five sixty-three, we're gonna withdraw this at this time because it's really, shouldn't be in the zoning regulations. So I'm gonna ask that the forty-five sixty-three be withdrawn. That really had to do with the county acquiring right-of-way, giving some flexibility so that they could adjust the setback distance, but it really doesn't need to be in the zoning regulations, so I'm.
I thought we were running the substitute bill to allow the applicant to apply for a setback difference if they're taking, if the county or whoever are gonna take 50 feet for a setback, then that person on their development of their property can ask planning and zoning or community development for a variance. It's not set without being sued. That's what we decided to do with the substitute bill. I thought our Dita was working on that.
It's, but Joe, it's not a substitute.
Oh.
Yeah. It's really gonna change, it's not even gonna be part of.
This is the one where you need to withdraw what was introduced. Come in with a whole new bill.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so, I'm sorry, okay, so we're, okay.
So we're not gonna adjust the zoning and subdivision regulations to accomplish that, so we're just, we're just gonna withdraw that.
Fifty, forty-five sixty-three is withdrawn?
Sixty-three.
Forty-five sixty-three, we'll have to do that in the meeting tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think Greg Dorman put a new one together that, are we introducing this one tonight? Or, I didn't think so. So, I didn't see it, so, okay. That's right, sorry.
We're gonna talk about this one then? We'll review this one. So this is a draft that would actually kind of replace this one?
Yes, that's the draft that'll come into the next meeting. So forty-five sixty-four.
Whatever number, it does have a number, but.
No, that's the, that's the one that you're talking about taking place.
That's the, that's the one that's.
We don't have, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have.
No, no, I know, but we should, if we're gonna withdraw that, then this is, this is the replacement, so this should be discussed, so we all want to, can have a conversation about it.
Discuss it.
Yeah, this is what, this is what you're replacing with. This is a, did you guys look at this, Steve?
Which one?
This is, it's, it's gonna be a substitute of forty-five sixty-three. It's not introduced yet, but it'll be introduced in February.
We didn't get any of the, what the changes were that you made.
Okay, so.
First time we're seeing them.
Greg, is this the one you did?
It is, it's a.
Can you come up and.
Yeah, absolutely. The committee last week asked me to work on a different bill for that, said we're going to withdraw the existing one. So I've done that and then I've emailed it just to the committee members to get comments from you all before I shared it more broadly. So whenever I hear back from, from the committee that you're good to go, or if you have one changes, we can do that, then I'll send it, send it out to the whole council and share with the executives.
Well, you can do a brief summary of what it is and what we asked for, if you went to.
Is this the one we talked about?
Yes.
Yeah, and you said you got, you think it's good.
Yeah, I took your comments to the original bill and together with the input from the committee, tried to balance all that together.
So why don't we talk a little bit about this one and tell me what it does, since I've just seen this one?
Absolutely. Let me get my copy.
And one example that we've used before is that gym on Highway N, and I did invite Steve Aaron. He's a premier engineer, and so if you guys got any setback questions, we have a ton of stuff to talk about. He is an engineer. He has a firm in Saint Charles County. And his, one of his projects was kind of centered around this when we were trying to do that gym on Highway N, that he designed it and the county, or the county, I'm not sure who was it, the county or the state took the setback and. And then, yeah, and so this is what we're trying to try to help people with, fix it and have, you know, some kind of, instead of them having to sue the county to get an adjustment with their setback, they can negotiate it with community development instead of filing a lawsuit.
Yes, and so it provides that administrative authority to the community development director to make setback line adjustments, just in those limited cases where it's coming from out of a need due to a right-of-way acquisition by a governmental agency. And the, then if the, if the property owner did not get the relief or the full relief he or she is requesting, then they could appeal it up to the county council. One of the things I did here, though, was to make clear that if you choose that route of your administrative relief, that you would be foregoing your right to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. That was one of the concerns executives had of, you know, setting up parallel routes and staff being, you know, not, being put in a position of trying to tell the applicant, you know, which one they think is best or something like that. This would be, this would be a choice, so once you would set down that path, you'd be waiving your right to go to the BCA. But, and then the rest of it is just the appeal procedures that would only apply in the event that the community development director, you know, did not grant the applicant the relief they're asking for.
Then it would come before the county council.
So describe exactly how it would work if somebody was, if they were, if they were taken like 10 feet, how would it affect their setback? They could subtract 10 feet off how they were supposed to be setback after that, or explain how that would work.
That's what they could ask for. So, yeah, let's assume there's an undeveloped tract of land, but they have plans, they know what they want to do with it, but then, you know, the government, you know, state, county, city, whoever meet or, well, it would be state or county, needs an additional slice of right-of-way for a road widening. So that, you know, that could, that can be negotiated and that acquisition take place as it normally would. But the hurdle that sometimes comes up is in the applicant saying, or the property owner saying, I don't have enough space left to put my, you know, building and the parking lot that your codes require me to have and everything else on that existing space, plus landscaping buffer or whatever else. So they would be able to apply to the community development director for an administrative variance from the setback requirements. So, and then we put in here that there would be no fee for that application and they at least have the potential for a much faster and easier route than going through BCA for that type of an issue. And practically in right-of-way negotiations in the past, we have, they don't come up too often, fortunately, but when they have come up, at times we've been able to go to the planning and zoning director and get a letter, you know, saying that they would not enforce the ordinances against that particular landowner because they were, you know, had property acquired under the threat of eminent domain. But this would give us a way of doing that same thing more formally and having something in the end that would be a written variance that the property owner could rely on.
Greg? Could, could we do that? Could we offer that to them originally and therefore blunt any argument they had about damage to the remainder? Or do they have to, do they have to ask for it, or can we give it to them? Because the alternative, you know, if they, if we just stick with the rules as they are, they're gonna come in and they're gonna argue, okay, pay me for the right-of-way, but then you also need to pay me because you damaged the rest of the property. Can't build anything on it. So do they have to ask for this, or can we go ahead and, and say, and by the way, don't, don't ask for damage to the remainder because we're gonna, we're gonna get rid of this setback requirement?
They would still have to request it, you know, make the application to receive that relief of an administrative adjustment, but it would be something where we would, you know, if we were in negotiations and knew that was a stumbling block, be able to go to.
But they would have the choice either or. They could, they could get relief or they could just ask for damage to the remainder.
Yes. Our choice would, of course, be to try to, you know, figure out something reasonable that allows them to still use the property and avoid unnecessary damages.
Initially, I thought it would be better if we were doing a land acquisition or that the county had that ability to negotiate that without going before the.
I think, I think it's a good idea.
So.
Steve, do you got anything you want to add to that since you were one of the ones?
I do. As Joe said, I own an engineering.
Can you come up here because they're not gonna be able to hear you.
Sure.
I own an engineering firm here in Saint Charles County, and I also own the sports barn that's on Highway N. And a couple of years ago, we came before this, this council and really had an issue with the fact that the master plan showed that your setback had to be half of what the master plan was. So Highway N, as we all know, is very congested. It's, it needs a lot of public improvement and we know that. But my issue was, my neighbors who have a 15-foot setback from the road, I had to put up an 85-foot setback, which seemed exorbitant to me. And yes, someday Highway N will, will need that. But the county had no plans or funding at that time, and still does not, as far as I know, to, to make Highway N a five-lane road or even a three-lane road. So I'm sitting on a setback, and I think I worked with John quite a bit back then. I'm sitting on an 85-foot setback that I can't build in, I can't put my parking lot in it, and it may be 15 or 20 or 30 more years before the county ever does anything with that. And the only purpose for that is so that I can't build a building that the county someday has to buy, right? I mean, that's, that makes sense. It's saving the county money in the long run. My issue is, that property is completely unusable to me and what, one of my arguments was, was A, I couldn't build, and I did not build the building that I needed to build. Now I'm currently into the county for permitting for a second building that I have to build because I couldn't get all, everything I needed in the first building. So my issue is, if you're gonna require an 85-foot setback on something of that, that level, is that not a taking? Should the county not have had to buy that and get to a reasonable 15, 10, 20-foot setback? Instead, I mow it, I pay taxes on it, I sit there and look at it every day for the next 20 to 30 years, however long. And the reason I bring up 20 to 30 years is during that time, we brought up an article that was in the newspaper in 1986 that said Highway N is in need of expansion, what, 30 years ago? That was in 86 and nothing's happened except for we widened the shoulders by two feet. So for me, it felt very unfair, the process, because there was nothing I could do about it. And in talking to Joe at the time and Mr. Cronin at the time, there was just no avenue to say, guys, I need a bigger building. If I can't have the bigger building, why doesn't the county purchase that property? If you want it, fine, take it, but buy it.
Well, you would've had to sue the county to get, so what your, what your point was is you would say, with this ordinance, you would be able to, and correct me if I'm, Greg, if this is right, but he could say to community development, I'd like to have my parking lot in front of the building or encroach so far, like give me 20 more feet or whatever, you know, give, give, go to the community development instead of having to file a lawsuit and sue.
Joe, to that point, right now where I'm at, I'm building a second building, but I still have that 85-foot setback and I actually need that property for parking for these two buildings. I would love to be able to at least park out into that area, even if I didn't build the building that far out. I think part of my issue is, and it's not just with Saint Charles County, it's with every city, every county, you know. The hard part for the person trying to develop, and again, I own an engineering firm, we do all of Raising Cane, CBS pharmacies, a lot of those guys like that. The problem is, there's never really a good avenue to have that conversation with somebody. We dealt with Mr. Ellis, Harold Ellis, back then. We probably met with him four or five times and his answer was continually, the ordinance is what the ordinance is. You can go for a variance, you can go through this process or that. But, and it's kind of maybe just particular to me, but in that case in particular, we, it's an indoor sports facility. So we had to be open in the winter time. That's when the sports, you know, baseball and softball, when they train. So for us, we were then setting into, we came in November or October, November, December into January before it got approved, and I don't know if you recall, but the night it got approved, the board told us, you know, hey, we understand what the issue is. If you want us to table this, go work with Mr. Ellis and see if, you know, you guys can come to terms on something, which Mr. Ellis had already told us, there is no come to terms on something. It's an ordinance and you gotta follow it. But at that point, it's January and I've gotta be open December 1st. The only thing I can do is say, pass it with an 85-foot setback and I'll go, you know, I'll go build it with, and I felt like I got railroaded a little bit, not, not to anybody's reasoning, but, you know, just seemed unreasonable.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask a question.
Yeah.
85 foot, is that total right-of-way?
That was from, I believe, John, is that not from edge of pavement back?
It's center line.
Center line back.
Plus 25 feet or zoning district where.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, we're at the center line.
Center line.
The existing right-of-way that the highway department has is how wide?
It's probably 60 feet, so maybe 30 feet.
How much?
I think it's 50 feet.
So 30 from center.
60, so it's 30, and then how much additional did the plat acquire?
It's 25, it's 25 feet or the zoning district yard required.
Okay, so it's 25 feet beyond what the right-of-way that it was already there?
No.
Whichever is great. So the zoning district has more as far as the bigger front.
The existing.
Wait, wait, I believe. The middle of the road, okay? There's already a highway right-of-way there.
Right, 25 feet on each side.
25 on each side, okay, and then how much additional?
So 85 minus 25, 60 feet.
How much? 45?
85 minus 25, so 60 feet.
60 more feet.
So there's additional 60-foot setback, is that right?
From the edge of pavement?
Yeah.
No, from the existing.
From the right-of-way.
From center line, 60 beyond right-of-way.
Well, he's saying 60 feet from where the edge of the, the highway.
The highway already has a certain amount of right-of-way.
I believe it's 50 foot, feet, John, and that might not be right, but I.
I think the thoroughfare plan asked for 120 feet on Highway N. We didn't have it, so from center line, that would be 60 feet because of the 25-foot building.
So what's, how much of his property are?
85.
85 feet.
Huh?
85 feet.
85 more feet.
It'd be like 50 feet, 50 to 55 feet.
Well, the good news is that second reading, they're gonna second read tonight money to pay for a study of Highway N.
Sure, and they need to.
Which, you know, when that gets fixed, your property's gonna be worth a lot more than it is now.
And I actually would've said that. If you guys were gonna come through and fix Highway N and make some improvements, I would've had no problem giving up the right-of-way. But as of right now, there's no funding, no plan, no anything, and this is three years ago, Mr. Ellis, you know, so I've gotta sit on it and wait for you guys to make that plan.
So that's second, if your sports barn's on, there is funding. It's under design and it's scheduled to be constructed in 10 years. So that's gonna incur before this, so when you came through three years ago, there was already a plan to start providing funding to the county highway department, which this is one of the, right, it's a state route. But because of the safety of that S-curve through there and the blind spots, wallowing, hobble coming in there, county highway department, safety bug, and has been now in the process of designing and improving, which is to be structured in two years. So the whole purpose of the existing law that's in place is to ensure that buildings don't get built in the footprint of a future roadway. That's why I have a little bit of trouble with this bill because it's allowing someone to seek a variance, to put a building in the path of a roadway that we know is gonna need to be built someday in the future.
No, 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 it's not. All this, all this bill does is allow the setback to be reduced. If you're taking 10 foot, give you an example, if you need 10-foot of right-of-way, more for right-of-way, then the setback gets reduced 10 foot. So now instead of having a 30-foot setback, they got a 20, they're granted a 20-foot setback, is what this bill does.
What Harold was saying, what he was saying is, it gives, it would give Greg or somebody in our office the latitude to work with them to say, and they don't have to, they're gonna stick to, but they could, what, right now, it's black and white, it's this or that. But if they, if this ordinance is passed, they can negotiate it in-house and that's, I think that's, that's fair, you know, say, hey, listen, if it's a bad idea, then you just won't agree to it and then they'll go to court anyway. But now they have to go to court.
So how many, how many other places in the county are, it's because it's commercial, right?
Yes.
That's why. How many other places do we have that wide a right-of-way reserved?
Highway N is the one that jumps out to me. I don't know, I probably know better.
Major, 120 feet is required when we own pretty much most of the state routes like Route N or Route C.
Right. Right, so Route K, when they were, when parts of Route K were in the county, were we requiring the same kind of 120-foot setbacks?
Route K was developed prior to the adoption of thoroughfare plan, for the most part.
So is this the first time this has been required then?
It's not the first time. It's been done, it's done very commonly with subdivision plats when a new homeowner.
Right, you know, I understand subdivision plats, but we do the same thing with a commercial. Somebody wants to build a strip center. Now, he was building a gym, but if you wanted to build a strip center, we would've required the same thing.
In order to require additional right-of-way, we need to see that tied to the use of the property. It would have to be affected by the property development. So that's why the reservation. So, that's why the reservation is required rather than acquiring the right of way. Rather than forcing the developer to give the right of way away, we, we make sure that the setback is based on that right of way reservation.
So, is there any provision to allow, uh, until that road is built, him to use part of the right of way for parking or something?
There is none.
You couldn't do that if you wanted to?
Well, from a building.
It's not allowed from a setback.
Huh?
Yeah, anything allowed in the setback, not allowed in the setback, cannot do.
Well, parking, I can, I can understand a building, but I can't understand parking. Parking, you can, you need to take.
Parking is a different matter.
Okay, so I don't understand, I thought the purpose of this bill was to give you the ability to make that call and allow him, if he wanted to do the parking in that space, he would be able to do that. Is that not what I just heard you say?
That is correct.
The bill allows them to go ahead and take less right of way. What I'm saying, wouldn't it be in, in everybody's interest to allow, to have us to have the right of way and to have the owner have the ability to use it for something else until?
Right, but what I, what I thought, hang on for a second if you would. Greg, can you come back?
Yes, sir.
No, Steve, you can stay there, you don't have to sit down.
So, is what I just said not what, what you said? Like, does this not provide a pathway to, if he wanted to have this done and say, hey, I, I get building my bill, building eighty-five feet back, but I wanna use that front area for parking? He could go to community development, community development could say, we get what you're wanting to do, here's what the, the thing that you're facing in terms of right of way. We can approve this part for you to put your parking in. Is that not what this bill does?
Well, it, they'd have the ability to make adjustments if there was a right of way acquisition. And so, that, part of what I'm, uh, think I'll need to work, you know, to look further at is what would trigger this. I've tied it to acquiring right of way, but I'm hearing that because of this reservation situation.
In my case, there wasn't a right of way.
He hasn't, he has not conveyed any right of ways yet, so that, that's one issue. And then, the, the second issue would be, you know, they'd be able to make a setback adjustment. Well, if you're talking about a period, an interim use period where, uh, you want to be able to give a property owner permission to use that parking lot, uh, to use that ground for parking purposes, only so long as, uh, the highway.
Until the roadway's need, right.
Exactly. Um, I would wanna write something a little more specifically to address authority to grant interim use to do that, because a, a setback adjustment, you know, could be done, but that would be a permanent change to the property. Or, you know, I also included language that could tie it to, as long as the property is being used in a specific way, this would be wanting it to be tied to how, uh, the road was being used or when the road would be further developed. So, I think I would wanna take a look at that and add a little more language to address that situation if that's the direction that you all wanna go in.
Is that the direction that you wanna go? That's the direction I would wanna go, but I don't know if that's, I was a part of the ad hoc, so I'm, I'm feeling my way through this one.
Well, I, I think that, I think that the, the property, the applicant has the right to try to say, hey, I want, I wanna use the property. I, I, I understand why the building should be out of the way if there's future development. I kinda get that, um, don't you, Dave? Are you saying that it should be negotiated through community development? They, they can always disagree, but, um, I think the parking is a, is a no brainer.
I do too. I think you oughta be able to put parking in front of that building. Go ahead, Mike.
So, that, that would need an amendment to a different section under the parking rights. Parking regulations, it's a state, no front, no parking in the front or setback.
So, I, I think, uh, this bill needs a lot more work, so.
I think so.
I think, uh, let's just go ahead and.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just a little perspective here. The problem here from the, from our, well, we're trying to deal with here is, you know, those of you who are almost as old as I am may remember when Highway ninety-four was a two lane road. All right, so forty years ago, thank God that the council required people building their businesses to set them back far enough, and now it's a, what, eight lane road? It's an eight lane road, and we didn't have to buy, or, you know, we had to condemn some parking lot maybe, but, but, but we did have to condemn any buildings. So, that's the whole thing here. I mean, we, you know, we want him to have the best use of his land possible, but we don't want to have to buy his building someday and tear it down.
Exactly.
As the roads come through. So, you know, those are the two competing interests here.
I think we all agree.
I think, I think we agree with that. I think, I think we're close. It's just gotta iron out some of the, you know, we're trying to, a lot, a lot gotta use this granite, the thing it built for thirty years, at least the front parking or whatnot, but keep the building off the right of way. Right?
Yeah, and, and my building's built. I don't have, really have a doubt, despite other than to come and tell you guys what the process was and how it affected us going through it. One of the things that I think may have gotten kinda overlooked here is, there was no standard setback per ordinance on my property. It was, how's it termed, Rich? Something about the master plan, half of the right of way, the future master plan. It was part of my heartburn was, anybody can change the master plan, and suddenly it can be a two-hundred-and-ten foot right of way versus commercial zoning is thirty feet or forty feet, or whatever it is. So, that, that can change because of the wording of the ordinance, based on whatever the master plan becomes. It was kind of an interesting ordinance from my perspective. You know, we thought we, when we designed the building, we thought we had a, I don't remember, whatever the zoning number was for a commercial in that area, we thought that was our setback, and we designed to that. Only later to find out that there was this ordinance that says, according, in this district, according to the master plan, it's half of whatever the future someday right of way is. Well, that's just whatever somebody determined it to be. So, that seemed a little, you know.
Well, at least everybody agrees there ought to be more flexibility.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, it's six-thirty-five. You have five more bills to go, and so far, we agree on everything, the first three. So, we've spent a half hour discussing something we all agree on. Yay!
Same thing. Uh, next bill, forty-five, sixty-four. Has to do with agricultural zoning. And, uh.
Yes.
Buildings and other structures use the barns utility bills to attach carports or attached garages providing such structure and not used designed or intended to be used as a residence. So, this would allow somebody to have a storage building on their agricultural property without a, without a house.
He can build a barn.
Yeah.
And, uh, Cronin's thinking.
And you know, I think, again, what I suggested on here is, this is just one of those screwy situations. If the guy had come to us first, he wouldn't have torn the old built barn down, right? So, but he did, and then he came to us and, you know. So, it's a, it's a matter of equity here, and everybody's trying to be fair. My only suggestion is, let's fix that problem, not create a bunch of others.
Well, did.
Uh, one of, uh, I won't say which one, but one of you guys, a few years ago, and this was the same sort of thing. We had, had a non-conforming, uh, sign out in the, uh, front yard or something. It had been there forever, okay? Nobody had ever complained. All of a sudden, somebody did. Well, we went ahead and made it, made it, made it legal, okay? And then later on, we came back, made it illegal again, but now it was a non-conforming, conforming use, okay? Nobody complained, everybody was happy in the end, and we didn't create, you know, any additional problems. So, I understand if you wanna try to fix this situation, but we oughta do it as narrowly as we can so it doesn't impact any, any other.
Yeah, that, that's not really, there's a part of this that addresses that one specific situation. But, uh, this also has to do, if somebody has, say, ten acres, and they wanna put a, a storage building, and put their four-wheelers or whatever else in, tractor, if they can do that without building a house, this, this would allow them to do that.
Well, I don't live in a ten acre neighborhood, so I'll, I'll defer to the, to the people who do.
That's one issue.
And, and how would you feel about somebody building a garage, you know, on a five acre lot somewhere?
That's good, great. I hope they do a nice job. That's, we had that conversation.
And that's just a policy issue you guys need to deal with.
So, so, but just, guys, keep in mind, the four, forty-five, sixty-four, and forty-five, they're two different bills, but they're very similar, so make sure you guys aren't talking. The one is a Jesse Bauer, the first one's a Jesse Bauer deal.
That has to do with agriculture.
Yeah, where this is agriculture, where you can have so many square feet of storage shed, but some of these guys have historic barns, and they don't think that should be included as, as if he wants to build a new barn. And I, I think, I agree with Mr. Cronin on this, I have no problem with, 'cause otherwise you'd have to tear down your milk barn or something like that, that's historic. And so, we're just saying that if it was built before nineteen fifty-nine, it doesn't count.
Do you agree?
Is that, that's a good one too, isn't it? I mean, no one cares. And then forty-five, sixty-five is just the one that Dave was talking about, that allows you to build a barn. And we also took on page three, we took the categories. We had, um, I think we had, I don't know, six or seven categories and reduced it to, what, three or something?
Actually, four.
Four, which is, it's just, make it a little cleaner, it's really, doesn't make any difference. I mean, it's, and I don't think there's any objection, I don't remember that one being objected at all. Then forty-five, sixty-six, Dave, those are the two barn ones.
Forty-five, sixty-five.
Forty-five, sixty-six.
No, no, that's forty-five, sixty-four.
Sixty-four and sixty-five.
Forty-five, sixty-five didn't have any issues at all.
Sixty-five, sixty-five is for res, is for, uh, residential.
Yeah, sixty-five had no objection and no substitute, so it's good. Forty-five, sixty-six has a substitute.
And basically forty-five, sixty-six.
This is the gravel.
Yeah, would allow somebody to, uh, build a, up to five houses on a gravel road that's, it's not more than a quarter mile long, and they would not have to get it engineered to design a gravel road. But they will, under the, under the, uh.
Have to get a permit.
Under the substitute bill, I, they do have to get a permit, and they do have to get inspections out. That, that was a concern, I know, that a couple people had, including the county execs, so.
Are you guys good with the substitute?
The county executives not seen it, so, well, we, most of you went through that with Brian. We didn't get built.
I thought Greg, didn't you go through this with Steve? Greg? This was the bill you guys.
I had some comments from, mostly I just, uh, tried to redraft this, considering comments that had been made in writing.
Come on down.
I, you know, this one, is this just one of damned if we do, damned if we don't, okay? You know, if we, if we do it, there'll be, some developers will be happy, but who knows down the line, you're gonna have somebody come in and, and say, gee, I bought, you know, I bought that house, and the road looked good to me, but it's terrible. And then they'll wanna know why we let them do that. And we'll say, well, it's a private road, and they'll say, yeah, but it's a private house, and you made sure that the electrical wiring was done correctly, and, you know, why didn't you do it for the road? It's, that, I mean, we didn't use to, we didn't use to regulate this, my understanding. Then the decision, we had some situations like that, and the council decided it wanted to. So, to me, I mean, that's, we can talk about the details. The question is, how much protection do you wanna give the homeowner who doesn't know anything about roads? Uh, and, you know, we all know a road can look real good. One, one year, and the next year, it's, looks awful, so.
But I, I think the concern was, but the concern was initially, to make somebody go out and spend five thousand dollars to engineer a gravel road that's less than a quarter mile raw, uh, long, when you can build the, the road for, for five thousand dollars, didn't make a lot of sense. So, that's basically the only thing that we've changed now, is you don't have to get an engineer, hire an engineer to design the gravel road. It does have, under the amended bill that's coming before you tonight, they have to get a permit and they have to get inspections. So, the road will be inspected by the county to make sure it meets the criteria. And we have criteria that says, if you want it, uh, the gravel road has to be eight inches of rock, has to have a certain amount of base, or if you wanna put down geofabric, then you can reduce the rock depth to six inches.
So, that is, that is part of it?
That's a, that's a.
Good.
That's it. I don't see any problems. If, if the road deteriorates, then obviously the county can come out and.
The county, it's a private road, but it's.
Private road, it still has to be inspected, at least to start with, correct?
Right.
I think the main, I think the main concern was, if you're gonna build these and you put in a really bad quality road, and then the developer's done with this thing after he built the six houses, and then the county has to come back and they say, we want this to be a county road, and then we're on the hook for the thousands of dollars it's gonna take to bring that road back up to code.
Well, we would say you can't be a county road until you, until you come up to standards.
Right.
We didn't impose any.
Well, it has, we have in the past, evidently, that was the concern.
We don't take gravel roads.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and if you're on a gravel, if you're on a gravel road, especially it's private, we're only talking about private streets.
As long as it's inspected, I don't have a problem.
It's gravel, I mean, it's constant, it is a constant maintenance, you have to.
You know, and again, the only inspection that's gonna occur is for the rock thickness of the compaction. There won't be, there won't be standards for the, the curvature of the street, how tight the curvature of the street is, the street grades, things like that, so alignment of the street. Those aren't gonna be looked at.
Yeah, but the plot, the, the plot's, they're gonna have to go through community development.
How do we know that it's built in the right place?
But, but you submit a. You submit a plot for any development, if it's, you still gotta submit it to community development.
A preliminary plat, that's the only time you'll see the alignment of the subject. It won't be inspected, it won't have any standards for alignment. It could be had the heavy sharpest curves as it wanted, steep, grades as it wants. But those won't be, you know, those won't be considered. You have reduced standards for these types of developments, and these types of streets that aren't the same kind of claim requirements for public streets. So, so there is reduced requirements for these already.
Yeah, the grades, the, the road could end up being as steep as, uh, as they could be built. That would not be something that would be, you know, inspected for. They'd just be looking for rock depth and proper compaction.
What's the?
Oh, we were just talking about, if at some point it becomes a public road, then, then the county still gets their opportunity to look at the engineering behind it, right?
Yeah, we, yeah, the county.
This is a temporary situation, I think.
Yeah, I'd have to go to an ad, then it'd have to, we, but the county doesn't take on gravel roads anyway, so it doesn't.
Don't you think the language of the bill suggests it could never become a public street, though?
That's one of the things I.
Does it say that?
It's one of the things I added, to balance the, you know, staff and executive concerns with what the, what the committee was wanting to see, was to, you know, make clear that if they choose this route to build an exempt class of short and private gravel street, that they, that would not be eligible to be petitioned for county maintenance in the future.
Yeah, and, and, and we're talking about, the total net work of the street proposed to be exempt are no more than a quarter mile in total length and serving no more than five family, uh, single-family residential lots, which each lot, no less than three acres.
I think it makes sense to me.
Sixty-seven is the next one.
So, is that one, is that one, is that, are, we're good with that one, or?
Unless somebody has some comments on it.
I mean, if, if, if there's concern, we can wait till Mike and Joe are back, and, uh, if you wanna hold this one back, because Joe Spurrow and, and Mike Klinghame was in the ad hoc committee.
If it's not gonna become our road, then I'm, I'm fine with it. If it's, if the county's not gonna be on the hook for it, then.
There's no urgency, I don't see a reason not to.
Which, which number is that?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six.
Well, then hold that one back, if that's what you guys wanna look at, Steve, you wanna look at it a little bit, or?
I mean, it's, it's not that big a deal, but, um, if, if there's gonna be a problem with it, if we're not gonna pass it tonight, or if there's concern, then Mike and Joe should be involved and, and let staff, if there's any tweaking to it, tweak it. But other than that, it's, to me, it's a no-brainer, but, you know, what do you want?
Well, I think the way it's written now, it's kinda buyer beware, all right? In other words, you, you build, you buy this home.
That's right.
You, do you understand that this road is the way?
You, do you understand that this road is the way it is, and the county has no, you know, we have no, you know, no, no way to do anything here. This is going to be a private road forever, right? So...
So, I have a question under the old form, if there's going to be a road, and you took on that liability, you go still by the road? I don't think they do either.
No.
No. You guys, this is Mr. Meyer. He was on the ad hoc committee, too, by the way.
I mean, you see this a lot out in the agricultural district, and, and, and in some cases, it's probably families that are wanting to build.
Sure.
Split up the, the ground so that, you know, for each of their kids or, or some other relative, and sell them off. And so, typically, that's what it is. There may be somebody that might come in and develop five lots with, with a road less than a quarter mile long, but it's gravel. We're only talking gravel roads.
Yeah, I mean, earlier, you do is grade it if there's a problem.
I mean, you have to constantly grade a gravel road, and you have to do repairs to it. That's, that's the norm.
Okay, let's move on to 67.
And the reason we kept it to a quarter mile, because the buses don't go down those shortest streets. You have to meet them at the intersection.
Okay, 67, Dave.
I'll let you go ahead with this one.
This is just, this one is, if you have a piece of property in a floodplain, that you're allowed to use the market value of the state license appraiser and/or the assessor's value, so you can do your 50% remodel. In the, in the last couple of years, we changed 3,500 properties to 100-year floodplain, and it created a nuisance for the property owners. And so, this gives them a little more latitude to, to do improvements. This is not unusual for other counties. They do this. Keith reached out to FEMA and got their blessing, and that's why there's a substitute bill. We had to put that language in there for FEMA, and it's just, it's pretty much everything that we talked about. It's just, it's pretty simple ordinance on, it's just page number four on page three is the only change. And that's pretty much it on that one.
What's the downside of this?
From the county's point of view, I can't imagine there is a downside. You're either, you're either going to wind up using the assessor's number, which we're already using, or the appraiser came in with a higher number, and the landowner chose to go with that, and we're going to use that for our appraisal and the assessment in the next year. So, actually, I think this may be down to the county's benefit.
I didn't know what the downside was. That's why I was asking, so... All right, 68. The thickest.
68 is, has to do with performance guarantees, and I think most of the changes there are just, I think a lot of it came from staff, basically, and, uh, makes it a lot more flexible in putting up that money different. I think in the other, the previous bill or our previous law didn't allow some of the things that this one does as far as how you put up your escrows, and it also reduces the amount of time to get those escrows back. And you can do it in portions instead of having to wait till you're 100% complete and only get 90 back initially, so they, they could actually get it in increments. So, like, if they got their streets done, they could get their money back for their streets, and then later on, once they completed all their grading and stuff, they could get and leave the county's requirements for that, they could get their money back for that part of the, what was required of the performance guarantee.
We're still having some problems getting performance guarantees back, but we had, the committee had talked about having to go to a, go to the council to get it back, but we didn't, we decided not to go that route. I think, I don't know, Steve, you, you had some issues. Did you get them worked out with some of your jobs, or?
That same job that we opened in 2015. It's not my problem, but the contractor who's working for us, he still has $11,000 out to the county that, you know, he complains to me that he can't get it back, but, and, and, you know, this may make the project look a little bad, but the fact of the matter is, I paid him to do what the county made you put escrow up for, and he struggled to get grass growing on one of the slopes, which in his opinion, the grass is acceptable at this rate. But now, he's gone through another winter, waiting on the spring to get his money back. You know, if I looked at it, I'd say, yeah, it's established grass. It's been there for, like, three years, about two years, two winters.
Thank Greg on this ordinance. This, this kind of helps with those problems where he can get it back incrementally, and if it's a grass issue, then that'll hold just on that part of it. That's the way we understand it.
The problem is, it's bare and sparse. It doesn't meet our requirement for completion of vegetation with less than 70% density on that site. We've had a problem. He doesn't have soil to grow grass on on that slope. That's part of his problem.
Have you, so, is that administrate? I mean, is that something where someone come in and talk, talk it through with the community development, or $11,000 for a hill sod is, I mean, I don't know, that's, I don't know if we can write anything in there to make...
That's part of the problem. So, he wants to come to me as the owner and say, hey, I need this, this whole hill because the county won't give me my money back. And I say, you need to figure out how to grow grass because it's your money out. The owner is not going to say, yeah, go spend $30,000 and I'm going to pay for it. And the contractor's going to say, I can't afford to go spend $30,000 every spring and summer I'm going to have to try and grow grass. And that's kind of the issue. We could sign it tomorrow, and he'd agree to take it, or if I agree, pay it. But, my, my opinion, it's his issue, and his opinion, it's my issue as an owner.
Are we good? I guess this has been...
We're going to have to wrap this up because we're ready for a regular meeting.
Can I make one brief comment?
Okay.
The substitute bill, this is the same, all the content of this is the same as the original introduced bill. The only purpose of the substitute was to remove a couple of references to the short gravel street exemption, because the way that was rewritten, you didn't need to mention it here. So, that's why the substitute is before you in that form, didn't change any of the content, but we would ask that you pass the substitute and not the original bill to keep the ordinance's language consistent with where you think, where we think you're going to end up on the short private gravel streets.
Did the substitute address any of the concerns, or just take that language out?
No, it just, it was referencing an exemption that exists...
For the gravel roads.
As originally written, but with, that's been substantially rewritten, so the, the referencing didn't, wasn't necessary anymore with how we rewrote the short private gravel streets.
No, but I think it's a question, it says, the escrow bill, address a guy that's trying to grow grass, and your whole $11,000 for a $1,000 issue. Does it address that, where he can incrementally pull his money out, or does it not? That's your question. No, it doesn't.
If, yeah, if something's deemed complete, then you can, under the, under the new system, get that refund more quickly, but it will not, nothing in the bill would address a dispute over whether the, the grass meets the 70% threshold.
But, Mike, I thought, I thought we were doing line items, where they could...
Talking about two different things. One's subdivision improvements, one's settlement erosion control. So, he's talking about settlement erosion control, where we said 50, 90, and 100%. Subdivision improvements will be able to release partial line items. I mean, releasing line items, but Greg's allowing certain situations to have partial line items.
So, you're saying your hands are tied because of the ordinance. That's why he's had $11,000 out on some grass.
For final release, yes.
Well, then, that's a problem.
Did you...
Well, that's not one of your...
I'm just saying, it sounds like that substitute bill's not ready for prime time.
Add this one, and we'll default this one?
Yeah. But doesn't it sound like it addressed what you just brought up that you wanted it to do?
It does, it does.
It does?
That's a different bill.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we want to move forward.
Does it, does it?
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Dave.